Unwilling. It's okay, in transparent dialogue with the community they contract with. This shows a lack of long-term commitment to the health and safety of the people. Live in it and visit our community and shows a backwards priority that is more important to protect the single organization. Then, and its leadership than the people they're supposed to serve. The trends that we're seeing in volunteerism in New Blair's are not unique. This is something we see throughout Wisconsin and the rest of the nation, but the solutions to all of these issues need an open and productive dialogue. With the leadership at the table and an EMS to serve and actually drive change. Thousands of times to die on the hill how cheap an EMS service can be provided. You get what you pay for. It's the time for our community to commit ourselves and invest in more transparent emergency medical care to our loved ones, so they don't have to suffer the consequences. How can we trust the service to be sustainable and provide good quality medical care to our loved ones? When they are willing to entertain a discussion on how their organization uses the fund dollars they receive. From our hard-earned tax dollars. Communities not worse off by contracting with another agency. Nor is the community at risk for reduced levels of service. On the contrary, this is an opportunity for the membership of the current New Blair's EMS organization to be a part of a solution. To service delivery. I'm confident in whatever alternative service provider is decided on that would be welcomed onto their roster. And into their culture of providing high-quality and transparent services to the Village of New Blair's and beyond. Lastly. Even though they're a private, not-for-profit, 501(c)(3), New Blair's area EMS has a fiduciary responsibility for these tax dollars used to help fund their operations. The New Blair's area EMS, a private organization. And their executive director has shown that they're not willing to engage in productive dialogue with the municipalities that they contract with. In turn, are not able to demonstrate the responsible use of our tax dollars. Twenty-four hours of pleading and attempting to change the mind of our village trustees does not undo a decade of financial irresponsibility. Excuses put people in the middle of these disagreements. It goes between them, the community, and the departments contracted to provide nine-one-one responses when people need them most.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
I think you have that taken from your pocket.
Thanks.
Okay, item four, approval of consent agenda.
We'll approve consent agenda.
All in favor, say aye. Pose, motion carries. New business. Uh, this consideration discussion, R twenty-five dash fourteen, utilities supervisor LTE.
Yeah, um, so the resolution is included in your packet. You're gonna see his campaign on there and that is because Bill has offered to come back and help us in the interim until he gets somebody hired as an LTE in his current position. Um, this is a great opportunity for the village because obviously Bill knows the job the best. Um, his new position that he's taking, he isn't working, he's working for them, Monday through Thursday, so he's available Fridays. Um, so we felt that this was a great option and opportunity to make sure that we have at least some coverage there until we hire somebody new.
We can't let this one go. I'm going to approve the R twenty-five fourteen utilities supervisor LTE position for Bill Cosby.
Second. One, we got one, oh, that's right. Before we go on, I just want to say, one of the reasons coming back is we're doing locates. That's we get located, I mean Scott can do them too, but uh. Bill, that's one of the reasons we like to work on Friday, that locates that he can get them done. Like I said, I think he gives that fresh force in them.
I went with them one time, but I plan, I plan on continuing to do it while we still here, while we get locates. But the locate season typically starts to taper off towards about winter time, so hopefully it'll slow down a little, which I think it kind of already is.
I have full confidence that between Bill's assistance and staff leadership, we will be just fine.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Pose, motion carries. Uh, item B, consideration discussion PD roof replacement.
Yeah, so this was, uh, one of the amendments headed to the agenda, which is why there's not any notes or memoraries in there. Um, as you all know, we're getting a new police department roof this year that was in our CIP for twenty twenty-five. Um, as they started tearing off the roof, we expected maybe some boards that need to be replaced, uh, minor. Um, unfortunately, we assumed and thought that the roof was sloped because it was sloped. Um, when they started tearing off the roof, uh, it turned out that it was just a bunch of buildup of old roofing materials that wasn't actually sloped properly. And so it's actually a flat concrete pad up there. So, all of that to say, it was not included in the original, uh, bid or estimate to put in tapered insulation to make that slope so that the water runs off back towards the dais. Uh, so if we don't do that, we're gonna put it on a flat pad and that water's just gonna sit there again and we're gonna be talking about this, you know, a few years after now. So, uh, the staff met with the contractors and I believe it's in the village's best interest to move forward with doing the insulated, uh, or the paper insulation. Uh, the caveat to this is the CIP was for seventy thousand dollars. The original bid did come in underneath that, but with this expense, it's around seventeen thousand dollars. Uh, we'll need that seventy thousand increase to seventy-five. So the bid came in right under sixty thousand, like fifty-eight. Um, with that additional expense, uh, it'll be around seventy-five thousand. I just, I need the board to sign off on going up to seventy-five thousand to, to pay for that. Um, I also will note that obviously this is an urgent situation because the roof is literally falling off. This is why we were in a rush to get it.
Motion to, uh.
Slope insulated.
I would, yeah, I would just say, if I could recommend, I would recommend, uh, proving expense up to seventy-five thousand dollars for the roof replacement.
Uh, motion to approve up to seventy-five thousand dollars for the PD roof replacement.
Second. Okay, we have motion second.
Just one second, one other thing I wanted to add, just though to remind everybody that was being paid for with surplus funds off CIP to begin with, that was the plan, it's just additional surplus, it doesn't affect any borrowings.
It's okay. Thank you. I've just wanna say, any more discussion?
You know me, Roger.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Pose, motion carries. Uh, item C, consideration discussion, twenty twenty-six budget workshop number one. It's on page eleven of your packet.
Yes, so there is a memo in your packet. Um, so this year's budget discussion is a little bit different.
Hey, Dan, I got the sign-on sheet here.
You can leave it there. Okay, so, uh, this budget workshop, uh, is a little bit different than we typically do. Usually our first budget workshop focuses on levy and we visit some of these ones. And the second one, we switched it around just because of some things going on with our budgeting process. Um, so it made sense to bring the funds listed in the memo towards you right now. Um, just a reminder, I think it's important to remember what our timeline was and we stuck to that timeline even with each short staff. Both in the administrative and electric position, but also in the department head position, which is really great, so we're in the department's position. Um, so in May, we approved this timeline and the procedures. In June, I sent out historical financial information and those figures to the department heads, so they could start working on their budgets. And then July and August, uh, they, those draft budgets from when the departments were submitted and we had meetings and talked through them. Uh, with department heads and, um, other leaders in these funds. Um, in September, all of our committees got a chance, uh, various boards got a chance to view the respective budgets for their committee or boards of Public Works, Public Safety, Parks, Cemetery and Library. Um, and then now we're in October, uh, we will be working through two budget workshops. This is the first of two, our second one will be at our next board meeting. And then in November, we have our public hearing and our first board meeting and the adoption of the budget at the second. Um, so we're still right on target, which is great. Um, a little, there was a little information in there on the property tax levy, which I think I hit it on a little bit earlier. Um, but the remaining, um, funds that do not require, uh, funds of Fund ten, sixty, twelve, et cetera, utility or TID are listed in this memo. And so this includes room tax, which is our Fund eleven. Room tax really doesn't change much year to year. Um, it's the fund we use to collect the room tax that then gets paid out to the chamber. The village does keep a portion of that as well. Um, and you can let me know if you want me to go into detail about any of this, but I know it's all listed in that memo, so I'll keep moving here. Um, the employee payout fund, uh, this fund is a, is also a fund that we don't use super often. Uh, it's primarily used when we have an employee that is funded, uh, their position is funded by, uh, tax levies, so it's not a utility position retired. Uh, that's the main use of this one. We also use this fund for employees that reach a threshold of sick time that allows them to be, have that sick time paid out at the end of every year into their North Shore bank account, which for our personnel handbook. That allows them to use those funds for health insurance premiums and retirement. So it's a really great benefit for employees that have been here a long time and have a lot of sick time accrued. Uh, we obviously don't know if that's going to happen or not, uh, a year before, because really depends how much sick time is used. Uh, so we did not budget any tax levy there, but we do have enough fund balance in that account to cover the average payout for that sick, sick leave for that one employee that we've had in the last few years. Uh, we have not received any word of any retirements next year either. So, I feel comfortable with that current fund balance and the funds that we would need to cover it. Yeah.
If Jeff was to retire this year, do you have an estimate what that fund would need?
Uh, so it really depends on exactly when he retires and, um, what rate he is making. Uh, so if I knew if he was retiring tomorrow, I could figure that out fairly simple. Uh, just to give you an idea, um, of the last person paid out of this fund who was here over thirty years, uh, on the property tax side, not utility side. Um, we cut a check, uh, right around thirty to thirty-three thousand dollars, uh, for that, that accrued time and that sick leave payout. So that's a huge benefit, uh, to our employees that stick with us. Um, you have to be here, if you're here longer than ten years, you get half of your sick time paid out. If you're longer here than twenty, you get the full amount when you retire. Um, so it's really a great benefit for our employees.
Well, I hope you're here for a long time, Jeff.
It's in his, I can see it in his contract and the fine grant, he can't retire till I do, Larry.
Good day, Eric.
Uh, but it, yeah, you're welcome. Uh, but Larry brings up a good point, obviously, we have to make sure we keep that at the forefront as we go through budgeting process over the next few years, making sure that we are budgeting some money in there. We did last year because we had the money to budget. Uh, this year, as we talked about, we have that negative ninety construction number, which doesn't allow our operating levy to increase. So, uh, it seems like a reasonable place to, to cut back this year considering the fund balance. Uh, our next fund is our library fund. Um, I listed out a lot of the details. The library fund obviously looks a little different this year because of the library project. Uh, numbers look really high, but obviously we're getting great money in and we're spending that great money on the project. So, I think when you take that out of it, the library looks pretty standard as it usually does. I think the important thing to note that may cause a little bit of confusion, but the levy increase that you're seeing in the library is specifically due to the salary and fringe benefit increase. It has absolutely nothing to do with operation of the new library. We're not increasing staff for the new library, there's no increased wages due to the new library. Uh, so I think that's really important to note. Um, but otherwise, like I said, uh, you take the library project out of the mix, uh, it's, it's pretty standard. The other challenge for Amy and I, I think this year was trying to figure out, we're budgeting for this library for half the year and we're budgeting for the new library for the other half. And it's really hard to budget for a building that you've never built this way. So, uh, we got really solid estimates, uh, from our insurance, utilities, et cetera, et cetera. We feel really good about it. Um, we're constantly having those conversations, so I think we're in a really great place and kudos to Amy for being able to do all this and maintain that levy increase of pulling the, the increase to salary. Any questions on the library? Um, okay, so the next fund, the chalet. Um, the chalet, and we talked a little bit about the chalet, uh, a few meetings ago. Uh, the chalet of the Golden Place, uh, does require village property tax dollars to sustain operations. Uh, the amount we have budgeted currently and for twenty twenty-six is ten thousand eighty-two dollars, which is an increase from last year of about seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Um, this does not include a construction loan that the village took out that has an annual payment of just under four thousand dollars. Uh, so that is not included in this, I guess, get out of the different fund, but just important to know that there are those expenses. Um, in twenty twenty-six, chalet revenue and expenses are budgeted just under fourteen thousand dollars with four thousand dollars of projected admission revenue. You may remember from our conversation that we had. You may remember from our conversation that we had, uh, earlier, I think it was last month, that the chalet came to the board requesting an additional LTE position. Uh, that position, they felt comfortable saying they could cover with admissions, so that's how we budgeted it. So that additional twelve hundred dollars that was needed to cover that position is budgeted in admissions, not in the levy. Uh, I think it's important to note, as I did last time, that if they don't get the amount of admissions that they need to cover that. The village will have to cover that shortfall with that fund balance there. Um, and it will be a, a good example of what we can do looking forward. Uh, but as I said before, I have a bunch of admissions that do not.
And I hope at some point we can do to the chalet what we've done with the cemetery. And start an endowment fund to cover all the operating costs. Which is mostly utilities and maintenance. Cause that, it should be rewired completely at some point, Jeff. Um, being built in early, early third.
Early times.
But anyway, that's for the future.
Yeah, that's a great point, Larry. I think that's really important that we always keep that, you know, off the forefront as we talk about the play now, on how can we better fund things that are now requiring property tax dollars? Is there a way to fund them that doesn't?
Yeah.
Um, actually, Larry, that's a great segue into my next fund that I'll be discussing, which is the cemetery fund. Thank you for that.
Did you set that up?
I paid it, no, no. The cemetery fund is obviously new for us this year because the cemetery is new for us this year. We officially took over ownership of the New Blair Cemetery and the New Blair Little Cemetery earlier this year, those are the official names. Um, for the twenty twenty-six budget, these cemeteries do not require the use of levy and property tax dollars. Uh, you may remember the village received about a hundred and forty thousand dollars from Swiss church when we took over the cemeteries from our perpetual care fund. Uh, the board approved last year to, uh, borrow three hundred thousand dollars and then take a hundred thousand from that perpetual care fund to invest in an endowment. That should set the cemetery up, should be the key word, to not have to rely on any property tax dollars going forward. That is the goal. Um. We, I've spoken with the community foundation, we have the ability to drop to twenty-five thousand dollars the first four years if needed. Uh, but as you see in the memo of the map, the fund balance should allow us to fully cover next year and at least the following year. And that's if, you know, we sell very few plots or no plots at all. I only have one non-resident plot budgeted there to be conservative. I, I mean, I'll be honest, people are not lining up to buy plots, uh, but you know, if we sell a few of them, that, that largely covers cemetery expenses. Another important thing to note in the cemetery fund, uh, we had Worth doing all the mowing and trimming this year. Um, we are transitioning that to having our Public Works department do the trimming for next year. Uh, Worth will still be doing the mowing, but Public Works will be doing the trimming. Our plan is to have them trim once a month, which will be more than what it was this year. Um, and we think that it'll, it'll look a little bit better, uh, because that is something we're seeing concerned about. Um, and the only other thing I will add to the cemetery fund, as you see later on on the agenda, we'll talk in specifics there, but, uh, Linder resigned as a cemetery manager. Um, our own, uh, Scott McNabb has stepped up to the plate, uh, met with the cemetery board, is gonna be taking over those duties, uh, those duties in-house. Which is honestly, makes a lot of sense, a lot of municipal cemeteries are covered by Public Works. Um, so there is a resolution to do with this as we go down later in the agenda, but just a, just an update on, on what's happening there, uh, in terms of staffing, so. Um, other than that, the cemetery is pretty standard, like I said, not a lot of expenses outside of mowing, trimming and staff.
That was just a surprise. Thank you.
Any questions on the cemetery funds?
Um, you know, like in the wintertime, who's, the flowers, if they have, yeah, very low.
We did this last.
Yeah.
You did this one, we did this last one, okay.
Yeah, and that was.
Since we took it over, there was, I think, at least one time that they, they had a funeral. After that, it's not, okay. I think we've done it, we've done it one time, maybe two times.
Okay. Moving on.
All right, moving right along, the waste management fund, Fund seventy, waste management is of course our trash and recycling, our spring cleanup, compost, et cetera. Um, the majority of the expenses consist of the contract that we currently have with Pelletary Waste Systems. They think of our trash recycling and they also take it, um, to the landfill. Um, we did introduce a recovery fee for recycling beginning in twenty twenty-three that has helped us recoup some of those funds and not rely so much on property tax dollars, which has been much needed. Um, as you can see, that fee is gonna be four dollars a month, uh, next year, that's gonna be increased to twenty-four and has stayed that way and will stay that way, I believe, until twenty-seven. Uh, revenue and expenses are budgeted at a hundred ninety-five five and about a hundred and forty thousand, forty-four thousand dollars in levy debt dollars, which is up from last year. If you look at the line and budgeting, see that there? Um, once again, a large part of that is just due to our contract that we have for Pelletary, so. Um, any questions on waste management?
I think they've been doing a good job. I do regret we don't have a, uh, pick up in the fall like we used to. I noticed Belleville had their fall one recently, so it brought back. Because, but we could talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Future point.
Definitely something.
How many years ago, Roger, did we remove this double, who's actually about, at least ten years?
Oh, wait, it's been a while.
No, I don't think so, no. More like five.
Yeah, I think five.
Yeah, and I haven't heard any people in my neighborhood talking that about it being missed.
Like a yard cleanup? We used to have two.
Yeah, anything you have that cleanup.
Not so expensive, we did it once a year. Yeah, I haven't heard any.
No, I haven't either, but that costs us over twenty thousand every time she did it. Yeah, and, oh, it's a big apartment, you look at the stuff that tells.
That's why I can't do my baseball anymore.
Yeah, but you know, what I will add to that is we have ninety-five hundred dollars budgeted in there, uh, for next year's spring cleanup. Um, if we would, let's say, add a fall one at ninety-five hundred, I mean, that's coming directly from that tax levy, there are no other funds within waste management to cover that. Um, and I think that's probably one of the reasons of the board away with it, as we said earlier, is it is very expensive.
Yeah.
Uh, certainly a nice service to have and something we can certainly talk about in the future when we might have more of those funds available. Uh, but for next year, it would be, we, we would be cutting something else.
Right.
Have to wait for Valerie to tell him, man. See if all those people feel.
Any other questions on waste management? Great. Uh, so the revolving loan fund is Fund eighty, this is another fund that, you know, we don't talk about super often. Uh, you may remember, uh, the revolving loan fund primarily is for the facade improvement grants, uh, but we also did have a revolving loan program here. Um, the board voted earlier this year to basically turn that, those revolving funds over to Green County Development. They run a revolving loan fund for Green County. We turned those funds over to them specifically for Village of New Blair's businesses, but they, this is what they do. Um, they, they are experts at running revolving loan fund programs. It took that, that weight off of our staff here and put it in the hands of experts that have really been doing a great job. Um, they've already given out, uh, some of those loans, they completely manage it, they check in with us, of course, let us know how it's going, but it, it really took that workload off of staff here. And it's being utilized, which is, I think, one of the reasons the board was interested in turning it over to Green County Development is that people weren't utilizing it. And was it because they didn't know about it, you know, look, and Green County's done a great job of getting word out there. Um, so that has been a really nice improvement to see. Uh, so what we'll really see coming out of our Fund eighty is that facade improvement, which I'm also happy to report has been heavily utilized this year compared to last year, which in previous years, which is amazing. Um, we have, you know, that money there to help our downtown businesses improve their facade and we, and we want to have them apply for that grant and use it. We've had a number of downtown businesses take advantage, so it's been really great to see and.
And, and the renovation across from the park looks terrific.
Isn't that amazing?
Decades that this has been done. Yeah, it is terrific, it looks great.
Yeah, it's very clear that the word is getting out about facade improvement grant and that's an awesome thing to have, so we're still very healthy with that fund. Uh, still set up the max we give out each year, I believe the board said it's forty thousand dollars. Uh, we haven't hit that in any of the years, uh, so we still have very healthy fund balance, but it is improving, which is great. Does anyone have any questions about the revolving loan fund? And I know this was a quick overview, our next budget workshop will be a little more involved because we're really talking about the general fund, which is Fund ten. Um, and our capital, our capital project fund and debt service, uh, along with our utility tits. Uh, but that is coming up at our next budget workshop on October fifteenth. Um, I'll be giving you lineups of budgets for those as well ahead of that meeting. And then, as I stated earlier, we will have our public hearing and adoption in November. Just to remind the board, these October meetings are really the opportunity to make changes. Once we get to that, that second meeting in October, once that meeting is over, we're really prepping for that public hearing. And while changes technically can still be made that first meeting in November, we really like presenting a budget for public hearing for the public that is pretty sound. Uh, so I would just remind the board that if there are changes that you would like to see made, October is the time to do it.
Everybody have any questions with Kelsey? Thank you for all the work. And Amy? Okay, um, item six, consideration discussion, library project update, Amy?
So this week, the work is going on, as you see, they have tingles today, um, or have been starting on that, they're also doing the air vapor barrier. So they're hoping to get that filled in water tanks all through the winter and we are well on schedule to do that. Um, they continue to work on that retaining wall, it looks like it's pretty much done in the back quarter, but we do have to come down along the sides a little bit. Excuse me, uh, our D and I, D and our recent was signed for the east sidewalk along with the depot there. So, um, RJ Houston is working to start concrete work on some sidewalks and that east sidewalk as well.
Amy, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody got any questions of Amy? Hey, here none. Item seven, item seven cemetery, consideration discussion, R twenty-five dash fifteen, establishment cemetery manager. That plays twenty-three different facets.
Yeah, so this is a resolution that also probably looks familiar because you approved it once before earlier in the year. Uh, because of how the cemetery board is set up, uh, the cemetery board is set up similar to the library board where they're able to make operational decisions about the cemetery without needing village board approval. Uh, this resolution specifically though, does need village board approval and the reason we're bringing it back to you is because we're changing how this position is taped. Uh, the cemetery board voted at their last meeting to approve a monthly stipend of three hundred dollars, averaging approximately the annuals. Um, that is the only change to this. Uh, the village administrator is authorized to make the final hiring decision and that was in the original resolution as well. Uh, so I'd just be looking for a motion to approve that stipend, which it wasn't hourly.
So I'd love to approve resolution twenty-five fifteen.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Uh, let's see, we go to EMS steering committee. Did you see that note that Jessica? Yeah, you're a. Yeah.
Definitely.
Did you hear that, Jesse?
Yep.
Okay. Um, Jesse, are you gonna give this update for you and Kelsey together?
Um, probably together, I guess. Um, we met last night and, uh, we had, uh, some budget concerns, we asked.
You're okay, Dan, because Dan is from the town of York. He's gonna be here during our closed session, that's Dan Trump.
Hi, Dan. Yeah. Okay, thanks. Uh, so we had, uh, some budget concerns and, uh, we asked a lot of questions, trying to figure out what was going on and we really didn't get any good answers. Um.
Yeah, I can elaborate a little bit. Here's many if you're not familiar. Uh, the Village of New Blair's received a seventy-five thousand dollar grant from, uh, the Innovation Planning Grant Study from the state of Wisconsin. To study EMS services in terms of feasibility and sustainability for years to come, population growth, aging population, et cetera. Uh, it's not a secret that across the state and across the nation, volunteer-based services aren't out what they once were because volunteers have those numbers. Uh, we were awarded the grant earlier this year. Uh, we formed this EMS steering committee that is filled up with folks that were familiar and are familiar with New Blair's. But also extremely familiar with the EMS field and/or health fields. Uh, we have a lot of great people that came, uh, to the table, um, a lot of great input there. Uh, we've had a few meetings now, our first meeting was in July. Um, and, you know, any good state or any good study is based on data. Uh, both qualitative and quantitative numbers and also experiences. Um, unfortunately, we've had a really, really tough time getting a lot of that data. Um unfortunately, we've had a really, really tough time getting a lot of that data. Um we've had a tough time getting data from DHS, state organization, and a tough time getting data from uh New Blair's here, EMS here. Um so a lot of the data that we've had to go off of are this publicly available data. Um and some of that publicly available data included uh nine nineties that were filed by the EMS organization. Uh which was a large part of our discussion last night. I think one, one key point that came out of the open session discussion last night that I think is important to share is the decline in volunteer.
Yeah.
Uh hours at New Blair's here EMS. Uh it was, I think, a seven or eight year period that they showed. And in that seven or eight year period, there was a ten thousand hour decline in volunteer hours from point two thousand and twelve. Uh which begs the question, who is covering those hours? Um and there was some math shared at the meeting, basic math. Uh that said either the, we have one paid employee over there, that was not included on this, it was just volunteers. So either that paid employee is covering, you know, fifteen hours on average a day, thirty to thirty one days a month, twelve months a year.
Or many years.
Right, this is an eight year span. Or, um and that, that was, that ten thousand hour decrease was from, you know. Year one to year eight, ten thousand over those eight years. Or we're having some gaps in coverage there because the, the data shows there is not volunteers there covering that.
When you say coverage, do you mean just call time or availability?
How, yeah, so how many hours were put in by those volunteers?
On calls or just, I mean, out on a call or available for?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
It doesn't count them just like I'm on call in case something comes in?
Um not that I'm aware, but I think the other important thing to note with that is that it showed the payroll system and there was a number of individuals there that. Had hard stops after a few years of service and they never had any hours again, but they're still in the payroll system. Um so the most recent year, twenty twenty four, I wanna say it was somewhere between uh twelve to thirteen people that showed hours on there. Um but the real concern is that average across the state is that calls have doubled in the last decade. And I don't think New Blair's is immune to that.
Right.
Uh we certainly haven't had a decrease of ten thousand hours of calls. I'd, I'd be shocked to see that. Uh so I think that's a really important thing to note in terms of sustainability and that's a concern for the village. And I would assume a concern for anybody that is, is looking to have emergency medical services uh for their folks. So. Uh that, I think, was the majority of our discussion last night. Um but as I said it before, it's, it's been a tough go in terms of analyzing data because we haven't had a lot of data to analyze.
Yeah, I misunderstood about how, what you wanted me to talk about.
Well, so when we had, was it last two village board meetings to go where we talked about EMS, we had to so. Go through the red flags, basically, which is good for us, but when you try to share it with people like in our neighborhood. What most people understand is an audit. They don't understand the specifics of an audit, but they, they understand and trust audits. So I say minimum is. They have, we have to do an audit of the EMS this year and if they don't wanna pay for it, we should pay for it. But that's a document we can use with the public and say, this is what's going on.
I would say that those discussions have been had and unfortunately, the agreement on that has not come, come to terms, so.
Well, I would say then, we'll look elsewhere after this year.
Uh.
That's my update that I have to share.
I agree with what Larry said. Um so we, we've, we've been in discussions for quite a while and um it's sort of a one way street. We ask questions, we don't get answers. We do get answers. They don't make sense. So.
In your opinion?
In my opinion, yeah. Um so it was a long meeting with a lot of talking and not any more information than we sort of up with.
Yeah. Well, that is the EMS steering.
Well, on the way home today, I was passed by the Green County EMS vehicle and the Belleville EMS vehicle. I thought, those are two good options you could work out.
Okay.
Like Larry's sounds. Okay, this, uh there's no president's report, I guess. Item thirty, announcement, the village's board will adjourn in the closed session soon to state statutes, nineteen eighty five one E. Delivering or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing of public funds, conducting. Other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reason required closed session, emergency medical service contract. We need a motion to go into closed.
Close, that's closed.
Okay, it will call.
Roger?
Yes.
Back up, yeah. Jesse?
Yeah.
Sarah?
Yes.
John?
Yep.
Larry?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yeah.
Do we have to know the things here?
Yep. Yeah, but whoever, it's up to the board who's in the.
Yeah, just stay tuned. Might have something. Yep, close it off, Jesse.